Well, good afternoon and welcome to the Norwood Planning Commission meeting for September 6, 2017. We have two different parts of our meeting today. The first part is going to be the public hearing. And when we get into it, because there's a project that wants to go talk about going in a PUD. So the way we do our public hearings is we'll let them come up and explain what they've got and what the proposal is. And then from there, if any audience would want to speak for it, they can come forward, give their name and address. If they want to speak against it, come forward, give their name and address. And from there, then we close the public hearing and then we go into our regular monthly meeting. So with that, we'll move along. Jerry, do you mind calling a roll call?
Chairman Gears?
Here.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
John Brown?
Here.
And Christopher Brown is not here.
All right. Thank you, Jerry. Underneath "Old Business" in our public hearing, we have no "Old Business." Under "New Business," we have one item, and that's the... Item number one is the Legacy Lots on Cortland Avenue LLC, Scott Call, representing owners of Norwood School District and the Norwood Baptist Church, of submitting a final plan unit development, which is a PUD plan for the properties respectfully known as 4,300 Allison Street, parcels number 651-0052-0123/128-90, and 651-0032-0012-90, and 2037 Cortland Avenue, parcel number 615-0032-0011-90, 2041 Cortland Avenue, parcel number 651-0032-0010-90, 2030 Weir Avenue, parcel number 651-32-0014-90, 2034 Weir Avenue, parcel number 651-0032-0015-90, parcel number 651-0032-0017-90, and 2046 Weir Avenue, parcel number 651-0032-0018-90, including the property known as 26 Weir Avenue, parcel number 651-32-0013-00. So with all that being said, do we have anyone from the developers who would like to come forward and explain and show what the proposal is for the audience watching on television and audience guests in the meeting? I'm happy to. Yep. Come on up forward, please.
My name is Scott Call, and I'm the developer of the project known as the Legacy Lots on And today, we submitted our final PUD to discuss that. It's a follow-on from the preliminary we did one month ago at the beginning of August. And it is basically identical, except on the final, we had to fill it out more where we have the final landscaping plans, we have the final placement of the signage, and pictures of what the signage is going to look like. We also, in the preliminary, we had the parking lots, but for final, it's actually a specific requirement to put parking in. And we do have the parking both in the preliminary and the final. It is Schedule D, and there's going to be four onsite parking spaces. And they basically, I haven't done the math lately, but it's basically 130, 131 spaces. There's 112 units, so each space will get one unit, or each unit gets one space assigned. And then there'll be basically 20 extra spaces for parking or extra cars. The other thing we're doing with all the parking is we're using the existing curb cuts that are there, and we're using the opening and the existing fences. So it's not going to change anything on the street, any, like, say, traffic direction or anything like that. You pull in and you pull out each spot as you would. There's no, none of the parking lots linked, so there's not going to be, like, drive-throughs where you come in once, like, you come in at Cortland, you drive through, and you leave Weir. Each one is a self-contained parking space, parking area. Also, mentioning it, like, say, Cortland, there's only one, like, entrance off Cortland, there's one entrance off Allison, and there's two entrances off Weir. And Weir, it has three city lots that are now parking, and it provides 48 spots currently. Actually, more. It actually is, like, close to 55 spaces. But what we're doing in our PUD is we're reducing the amount of blacktop in the area. So we're actually taking a little of that parking space out, so there's more green area behind the existing school buildings, like, say, on the south side of the Norwood Baptist School.
Okay.
That's basically, yeah, pretty much everything is how it is. We've put the phasing in. Once we get final approval on this and get through, you know, the public hearings, we're pretty much ready to start straight away.
All right. Just for those who maybe haven't seen our first meeting and those in the audience, if you could get just kind of a brief description of what the project is, you know, I mean...
Okay.
Because if not, if no one has heard before...
Okay.
If you don't mind, just...
More than happy to.
Okay.
Basically, what it is, it's a collection of the four existing buildings, which make up the two Allison Schools and the two, the Baptist building, the Baptist, the Norwood Baptist Church and the Norwood Baptist Academy. Okay? Those combined sit on four acres of land. They're combined, they're 125,000 square feet, the building space. We plan to, for the interior of the buildings, actually, on the construction side, we're building all these units within the existing templates of the building, like, say, the existing classrooms. Each classroom becomes one condominium. So there's very little, very little changes on the exterior, except to the two flat-roof buildings, which are both the Allison School and the Norwood Baptist Church, and we're adding two floors to the top of that. And we're, how we're actually designing and constructing them, so we're stacking them on top, sort of like a pyramid shape. So when you're at the street level and look up, it's basically not in your sightline. So, you know, it's not like we're going to build right to the edge and go straight up. So there's going to be a lot of, like, space up there. The existing old Allison School that was built in 1994, that has an existing height of 78 feet. Everything we do onsite will be below that. The cross on the Norwood Baptist Church is at 76 feet. So anything, any more upward building we go will stay below that, like, say, height envelope, so we're not increasing, like, say, in the neighborhood. We're not building any higher than the existing buildings. In fact, the truth of, the Word of Truth Church on Weir opposite this, that's at 68 feet. So there's some tall buildings right in that area. And again, we're staying below all the existing buildings. So that's one thing. We plan to phase it. We're doing one building at a time, so there's not going to be a huge amount of construction work going on. How the phasing will work is we're trying to take up the blacktop areas straight away, and obviously, we'll have to put in, you know, any new sewers, electrical lines, plumbing line, water lines, we do. The existing blacktops there that we've saved for parking and pass will refinish. Everything else will grade and will go to landscaping, either grass, trees, or shrubs. Again, that is in the landscaping plan in the final. There are actually condominiums for sale. We find it's owner-occupied. It will be more pride ownership there, so, because we want to retain the structure of the buildings, we want, like, say, retain, like, the neighborhood, things like that. So that's one reason why we're doing condominiums. We're looking at selling them, starting around $100 to $105 a square foot, which, again, for cops in the area, is slightly less than what you see, so we're not doing cost aging. The more expensive units will be the ones on the roof, because obviously, they entail new building. Also, we're putting eight units into the attic area in the old Allison School that now is just an empty form. And we're actually building eight units inside that, using the oak beams and everything to make them real character apartments.
Okay. Excuse me. Ma'am, do you live in the area?
Yes.
Would you like to come up here where you can hear? I see you straining.
I can hear you.
Yeah, I understand it's a wind tunnel. But if you live in the area, at least come up there where you can at least hear.
Thank you.
Because I don't want you to walk away and say, "I didn't hear anything."
Yeah.
So, no, no, just sit up there where you can hear. Sure you can. So that way, we appreciate that. And if you live there, you've got more interest than anybody, so... Okay. And they are going to be condominiums, as you said, Scott, so...
Yeah, we're basically, exterior-wise, there's nothing that's going to happen to the building, like, the newer, the two Allison School. We're going to reinstate, like, the main entrance. We're going to stain clean or power or, like, sandblast the exterior units, so it'll take them back, you know, as near enough to, like, new state as you can get. They'll have all new roofs. They'll be really neat.
Okay. Any questions? I'll ask questions later on after the public hearing. As we discussed before, I want to address that again, so you know it's coming, okay?
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay.
Thank you, Scott. With that being said, and we're glad you're here, I mean, so I don't know how much you knew about this project or if you've been following it at all, but anyway, in our public hearing, where we're at right now is we request anybody who wants to speak for the project to come forward. And if you're for it, you know, they can come forward, state your name and your address, and then from there, then we go, we ask anyone who's against it. So that's the part of the public hearing we're in. And as I said earlier, what we do is then we adjourn, and we'll go right into our regular meeting. And that is the only item in our meeting, but then we can ask, we, you know, ask more questions or if anyone has any comments. So with that being said, is there anyone who would like to come forward and speak in favor of the project? Do we need to stand up? Yes, up to the podium?
I need your name and address.
Yeah, and just state your name and address. Speak up, this woman wants to hear whatever you have to say. It's very important. I'm sure you listened to her quite a bit, so feel free to go ahead.
James Balastri, 2022 Cortland Avenue, 45212. We support the project. We watched the, we moved here in 1998, and we watched the street kind of deteriorate a bit with a couple of foreclosures, and so we're glad to see the development. And again, we do support the project. Our concerns are traffic flow, property maintenance. We want to make sure that the property is going to be well-maintained, that they're going to be paying attention to loud noise that might be emanating from any of the units. I'm curious as far as how the city intends to deal with the increased traffic, is there going to be a light put at Cortland and Montgomery? Because it's already a little sketchy with the vape shop and, you know, people going in and out of Chipotle and Surrey Square in general. So I'd like to know if there's going to be anything addressed as far as traffic flow. You know, our concern was always for the parking, but it seems like they've got it, from what I could gather from looking at the plans, it seems like they've got it segregated into different sections for parking, so that there won't be one area, one street that's flooded with additional cars, an overabundance of additional cars. So, and we'd like to be kept in the loop as far as any changes happen, because we know during projects of a scale such as this, changes can, plans need to change from time to time. So we would like to be kept in the loop as to any of these changes. We'll be good, we'll be good neighbors. We support development in Norwood, and we just want to make sure that respect is shown to the residents as far as our concerns. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak in favor of it? Step forward, please.
Hi, I'm Kelly Adams. I live in 2010 Cortland. We've lived there since May of 95. Have a lot of the same concerns as these folks here. One of my biggest concerns is I worry about what's going to happen to the homeowners' properties on the streets, Weir, Allison, Cortland. Probably six months ago, we had a gentleman in front of our house from a bank saying he was appraising properties, and that concerns me. I don't know what that was about. He said he didn't know who had sent them, and, like I said, we've lived there since 95, and I do not intend to move. I'd like to be a lifelong Norwood resident in the same house that I've raised my kids in. So I am very concerned about traffic flow. When Allison was in operation, the traffic was, it was not a good situation, and parking was horrible. So I'm glad that they have parking sketched out, but with, I think he said, 115 units and only 120 extra spaces, most families have two cars, so that kind of concerns me as well. Other than that, I'm really glad to see that big things are happening in Norwood.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else would like to come forward and speak in favor of the project?
Yes, I'm Jim Ferguson. I actually live at 1915 Hopkins. I own the plumbing, me and my brother own the plumbing company right across the street, Ferguson Plumbing, and we own a two-family right across the street from Allison, man, on Weir Avenue. We were lifelong people from Norwood. We all went to the grade school there, my brothers and sisters. We all graduated from there. You know, felt bad all these years that we've been sitting here watching this building go down. It's, you know, it just tears your heart apart. And then they talk about tearing it down and everything and stuff, so I'm very happy that they're going to do something with it. I know one person, I hate to speak for the dead, but Margaret Greenbrier would just be lovely about this.
Maybe.
She has been fighting on out. Come on, I've done work for her for years. But, you know, I really appreciate this, you know, that they're doing something with this instead of just, it's the oldest school in Norwood. It's been here, you know, I like to see something last. I'm not too worried about, you know, traffic and that. I go back, we had that plumbing shop since 1967. When that was a school and the Baptist had the school up there, we dealt with the traffic. It just has certain times, they came in and out and everything and stuff, so I'm kind of used to, you know, it can be dealt with a little bit around there. But when you think about what you've got right in front of you, watching the weeds grow up the other day, they were, like, three foot tall, and I complained a little bit, and somebody came and cut them down a little bit and sprayed some stuff on it, but they, you know, I watched the windows, those were nice windows, stuff. They're falling and stuff, because the springs and stuff are just rotting out. They've just been sitting there all these years. I can't remember if it's 10 or 12 years that's been vacant. You know, that was a real thriving part of the community. So, you know, when it was a school, you had people, you know, with their kids and everything else. Now, if it's going to be done with something that brings people into the neighborhood, it will get rid of some of the riffraff people that get in there. You know, I know you know about that, and you've dealt with that in that neighborhood. But, you know, I'm really for something to be done about this, and I've looked at these projects and stuff. They look really nice and everything and that. And I will keep my eye on things, because I'm right across the street there, too. And I know all these guys, too. I'll keep on them. If I don't like something, I'll let you know. But I'm really for this project. I think it's going to be good for the community and the whole of West Norwood. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else would like to come up and speak in favor of the project? All right, very good. Anyone would like to come up and speak against the project? Please step forward. Anyone that'd like to come forward and speak against the project, please come forward. Since no one has come forward, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that. All right. If you mind calling the roll, Jerry.
Chairman Gears?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes.
And John Brown?
Yes.
Thank you, Jerry. With the public hearing closed, we will move into our normal, our regular September 6 Planning Commission meeting. Geez, it's right there. Jerry, do you mind doing a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Williams?
Yes.
Chairman Gears?
Here.
And John Brown?
Here.
And Chris Brown is still absent.
All right. Thank you, Jerry. If the commission's had a chance to read the minutes of the August 2 meeting, do I hear a motion to accept them as if read?
Motion to accept the minutes as if read, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Any discussion on that? If not, call the roll, please.
Chairman Gears?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes.
John Brown?
Yes.
Thank you, Jerry. Underneath the agenda, we have no "Old Business." We have one item underneath "New Business." So I'm ready for all the numbers again. New Business, item number one, is the Legacy Lots on Cortland Avenue LLC. Scott Call, representing owners of the Norwood School District and the Norwood Baptist Church, is submitting a final plan unit development, which is a PUD plan, for the properties respectfully known as 4,300 Allison Street, parcel number 651-0052-0123/128-90, and 651-0032-0012-90, and 2037 Cortland Avenue, parcel number 651-0032-0011-90, 2041 Cortland Avenue, parcel number 651-0032-0010-90, 2030 Weir Avenue, parcel number 651-32-0014-90, 2034 Weir Avenue, parcel number 651-0032-0015-90, 2038 Weir Avenue, parcel number 651-0032-0016-90, 2042 Weir Avenue, parcel number 651-0032-0017-90, and 2046 Weir Avenue, parcel number 651-0032-0018-90, including the property known as 2026 Weir Avenue, parcel number 651-32-0013-00. With all that being said, are there any comments, suggestions, from everything we've heard to be at the public, from the public hearing?
Williams, Scott, you're back up.
Sure. If you don't mind coming up, Scott.
Scott, was 2026 Weir the property that you had not purchased yet?
That's correct.
Okay, is that still in the works or...
Haven't even spoke to him yet.
Okay. And I don't know if you can answer this, or maybe Greg. Was there ever a traffic study done in that area?
For me, no.
Do you know Greg or Warren?
No, there was not.
Okay. Let me just say this. You and I talked about financing, and we're going to get that, we're going to get that straight, and I know you have to do your due diligence, make sure the zoning and everything is properly, before the finance can go through. I will say this. This is, these, these people here who live there are our main concern. And we work along, we want to promote the development, and I've told you this before, I've heard this for years, this is what the city needs. They need development for new type of housing, whether it be condominiums or whatever. We work well with businesses, and we're going to say, okay, we're going to give you our word, we're going to do it. How do I say this diplomatically? You can't. But I'm expect you to do what you say. And we say this to all developers, not just anybody. We say this to everybody. And the reason we say that, developers, these people here who live there, so we expect, we'll, we'll, we'll work to get it done, we'll work to expedite things, we'll work to move things, we expect everybody to state their word. Period. Now, I have no, no doubt that you will, it's just a reminder that if you don't stick to your, your word, I will stick to mine.
I understand that.
And that's because of these individuals who live there. That's it.
And I understand that. And obviously, for the three people who came up and spoke in favor of it, they stress that they're long-term neighbors, and I understand that. As a developer, you know, we look into, like, say, look to dealing with the neighbors. That's why we're saving the buildings. If we're a different type of, like, say, mentality, we would just come in and scrape that lot, the three buildings, the whole thing, and then we could just start over, which sometimes is easy to do, but you don't get the end product that we're looking for. that we're looking for.
And I agree. It's harder sometimes. It's cheaper to raise them, but that wouldn't happen here, because that would never happen here. But it is cheaper for the developer to do that. And to save those buildings, like what's his name said about Margaret Weimeyer, to save that building, that would have meant a lot to her. She would have been on your doorstep every day, giving you, you know, critique in your performance, but that's a big deal. One of the things you said at one time, I'd like to bring back some of the people who attended that school and grade school and let them go through it before it changes. That's a great idea.
Yeah, we said we're going to have an open house before we start, you know, the real changes.
That's a great idea.
So, we'll announce it'll be some Sunday afternoon. But it's like, we want to retain the character of those, we want to retain the buildings. Because honestly, the value is in the uniqueness of the buildings. People no longer want to live in cookie cutter apartments where you shut the door and the walls. You know, they're looking for like a tie to like history and, you know. So, to us, having those four buildings there is more viable than a vacant lot. Although it's going to, it's going to be more of a challenge, but at the end of the day, we'll benefit from accepting that challenge and doing it. So, that's that. But then again, you mentioned financing. I'm happy to mention finance. This is one reason why we did the preliminary first, so we can actually get this out in the public, get it in writing, that this is exactly what we're doing, that we get a commitment from Norwood, that yes, you're all on board with us, too, that as long as what we do meets the current zoning, that when we put in for our building regs, all our plans meet building regulations, we can move forward. With all that, it helps us in our financing. Because until that's done, it's, let's say, it's like any other development, developer, I can take investors out to Greenfield and say, this is what we're going to do. And a lot of people say that's fine, but they leave their money in their pockets. But this project, the closer it gets to reality, it's the closer we are to having financing. We have actually commitments to finish the first phase, which is build out the Allison, which is the old school, completely finish the, all the like site work, like taking up all the blacktop, doing all the landscaping, going in, finishing the exterior of the Allison, we call it, well, it's the Allison Building, we're calling it the Kensington, doing all the interior infrastructure of the building, like putting the elevators in, public safety, and then finishing the units, the 27 units. We actually have funding committed to finish that. And with that, and we all, and there's just a huge amount of interest for people because they want to live in Norwood. They want to be, you know, in this location because of the transportation and that.
As far as the traffic goes, you raised the issue of traffic. We'll look at it. You know, about a lighter anything, I could, somebody could sit here and tell you, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. If I tell you that, I don't know what the heck I'm talking about, because you just don't throw up lights. You just don't. Joe works with traffic engineers, so if there's any, if there's anything that can be done to look at it, to see if something can be done, that would be done. But if somebody tells you, especially in this day and age, well, we're, the city, I'll just make sure the city does this, don't believe them, because they don't know what they're talking about. Joe handles things, and Joe works with a traffic engineer, and we just don't throw up lights, just be throwing up lights, because sometimes you can make it worse. So, but we'll, we will hang you out the drive by any means, being your residents there.
Can I also make one comment about the traffic?
Sure.
Because I've been here two years now, working on this, because it was first going to only be the Baptist church buildings, and then the two Norwood schools came up. So, it basically, we had to start all over again, adding those into the project. So, I've been here two years, and I've been living in Norwood for that time as well, and I actually live in one of the single-family homes on Weir. So, I'm in the neighborhood as well. And my personal traffic pattern is, I go three different ways, just depending where I'm going. I'll either go out where to Montgomery, I'll go down where to Allison, and I'll go left or right, whether I'm going south or I'm going north. And I see that is the same thing happening to the people who are living there. It's not like they're going to take one street to get there and one street to live. There's actually Montgomery Southbound, Montgomery Northbound, and Allison, which takes you either down to Victory Parkway or up to the 562 connector. So, it's, yeah, when they get close, there's going to be, you know, could be some traffic, but it spreads out very quickly. And there'll be, like I said, different access points of people coming to, coming home or going to work. So, it's not going to be like a Chick-fil-A wherever they lines up to get their dinner.
Yeah, and I agree, kind of echoing what was said when, by Mr. Ferguson, when the school was there, I mean, it's sad it's not there, but that was a traffic tie-up on all three streets, double parking. A matter of fact, we have that at all the current schools, even now. You know, where, for whatever reason, you know, they drop off, they park in the middle of the street and send the poor children across the street. But, yeah, I, and I've lived in West Norwood my whole life, so, went to kindergarten at Allison back in the day. And, but, yeah, I agree with you. I think it will spread out, it will never, but that was one time where you had drop off in the morning and pick up in the afternoon. And I think, I agree, I will monitor it, but I think it will pretty well spread itself out. Because I know back years ago, there was comments about making Cortland one way and Lowry the other way. If we did that, the concern was, whatever street, somebody had to go out on Montgomery Road and turn left or right, or you were done. So, it's more involved than, but I'm glad we never did that. Just as a comment, in some of our earlier discussions, we are working on the getting cost together for Weir Avenue.
Okay.
And see if we can get, if there's funding available through grants or one of the other Hamilton County projects to be able to get that street repaved.
Correct. Is this in bad condition?
I understand. And I'm not, but it's a joke, but I understand. So, I just wanted to leave you know, we, I've got our engineering for getting estimated costs, getting estimated costs together.
Okay. I know it's a long-term civil engineering.
Yeah, but it is being, that is in the process.
Okay, right.
But the other aspect is, now you know that he lives two blocks from you.
Yes.
So, as it progresses, now you know.
We'll be followed.
I'm sure you will.
And I can say, I know the statement or comment was made about it changing and all that. That's why we had a PUD put over the property maybe a couple of years ago, a year and a half, two years, three years ago, so that when these plans are submitted, as far as, you know, it could be interior changes, but as far as landscaping, outside and everything else, it is what it is, or they have to come back to the Planning Commission if there's any kind of major changes. So, that's why we have PUDs safeguard what goes in, in critical areas.
And we've done that four or five locations at least, and it's paid off at one, for example, some people. So, it was a way of anticipating a change and to make sure that the best interest of the city was protected, and that's the way we, the course we took was to put PUD over it to give us control. So, somebody just can't come in and rip it down.
Yeah.
And we've had this discussion before. This is exactly, and I know John's been in real estate, and Joe's been here longer in dirt, and he knows that, you know, people have always said, we need the residential thing. What about the homes? What about the condominiums? And this is, this is, I think, an excellent start, and to maintain those buildings. So, if you look at it for face value, it's exactly what we've hoped for. Does that mean we take everything for granted? We don't. We'll monitor it constantly for the progress, or, more important, the lack of progress. So, it'll be monitored on a constant basis, because it's critically important. As far as noise goes, I mean, if it's somebody like me, after 7:30, you won't hear anything. So, at night, so, it depends on, there'll be a lot of people maybe my age, or everybody's younger, but that would want to, you know, tire of a home, don't want to leave Norwood, want the services. It will stay there, and it will pay off, I believe. That's what we're betting on.
Yes. Question. So, I heard that you might start working as early as fall?
Yeah, we're hoping end of October. We've tentatively scheduled a roofing crew for the oldest of the two Allison buildings.
The one on?
The one on the corner of Weir and Allison.
Oh, okay.
That one. That's the one we're going to do first.
Okay.
And so, we've tentatively scheduled it, but nothing's been fixed on that, because again, we can't do anything until this is completed, done, and passed.
And how long will the whole project take?
We're saying two to three years.
Really?
Yeah, we're going to do one building at a time.
And so, people will be moving into a building once it's finished?
Yes.
So, we'll have new residents?
Yes, we'll do one building at a time. Again, the Allison old building is the first one. Possibly, when we finish that and there's still units to sell, we'll start working on the flat roof Allison building, and we'll work on that, and then we'll just stage it in as we go through. If the sales are what we're anticipating, what the demand we're seeing, we'll probably accelerate the building program, so it can only be like two years. But it's still a lot of work, although we have all the heavy work done. It's still constructing like all the interior units. That just take time. But fortunately, we can work through the winters, because we don't have to worry about weather. So, that helps.
Right.
That's okay.
Any other questions?
Sorry about that. And you said that you're probably going to repave Weir. Would they possibly do Cortland as well, since there'll be lots of construction?
I would say at this present time, you know, Weir is the one we put in.
Okay.
Because Weir, Cortland is a lot newer and better shaped than what Weir is at the present time.
Actually, what we, our plan is to use Weir pretty much as the in and out for the construction part of it, because we have the large parking lot behind the Norwood Baptist Church, so we can use that as our staging area for materials and things like that. And everything will come out that, in and out that way, we're planning. Because again, especially the one parking, the entrance between Norwood Baptist Church and the Allison School, it's a small entrance, it's a small parking lot, so we won't be using that at all. So, it'll be coming off Allison to the side of the buildings, or on Weir to behind the building, because it's a big parking lot. So, we can secure that and put, you know, you'll see lots of shipping containers, because we're having stuff delivered in bulk and things like that. And I, in one of our initial meetings with Joe Gray, you know, we talked about Weir, and they said they would look at it and they would strive to do it, but they don't have control to do it. And they would hopefully that, they could bring that online at the same time We're finishing. So, when all the construction's done, then Weir can be paved, and it'll be a nice street as well, which again, plays into us having the two parking lots on Weir and Allison. So, more people will want to use those.
Very good.
Okay?
Very good, yes.
Any other questions?
No.
Any other questions, John?
Do you have any idea what the cost of each unit will be?
Again, what we're saying is based, it's all based on square foot price. And again, the units are starting in the 90s, like 96. We have a couple one veterans that are, like I say, 80,000, but there's only a couple. But in general, again, the Allison, there's, because of how it's made, there's four corners and the three floors go together, so there's 12 two veterans, and 920 square feet. The one on, we're calling it the garden level is like 96,000, and then the first floor goes up to like 99,9, and then on the third floor, you're at like 103. So, it's still like 104 to 105 dollars a square foot, which is really good, because then that is basically, much if you get an 80 or 90 percent mortgage on that, it's the same or less than rent. So, that's another benefit. And the people we're seeing the most interest from falls into two main categories. One is the 25 to 35-year-olds, and like I say, the 50-year-olds up, who they're moving back into the city. And the 25-year-olds, the 35-year-olds, they want to buy something. They're done renting, but they don't want to leave, like the city. So, they like the idea of being able to like own a property, have something for themselves.
All right. Any other questions?
All right. Thank you, Scott.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do you have one of these?
No. You get one? Thank you.
All right. With that being said, I would like to make a motion to...
Motion to have the final plan unit development approved.
All right, I will second that. Any discussion on that? If not, Jerry, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Williams?
Yes.
Chairman Gears?
Yes.
John Brown?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Thank you, Jerry. We have no communications or any other miscellaneous items. Do I motion to excuse our absent member?
So moved.
Sir.
All right. Any discussion on that? All in favor on that? Just aye?
Aye.
All right. Do I motion to adjourn then?
So moved.
All right. Second. Any discussion? If not, Jerry, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Williams?
Yes.
Chairman Gears?
Yes.
John Brown?
Yes.
Thank you very much. The meeting is over.